We're six, but we can, we can start. We have some public comment. People signed up for public comments. If you would, when we call you, come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and then make your comments. We try to limit it to three minutes. I won't cut you off in mid-voice. And if it's about an issue, try to not repeat the same thing over and over, if that's okay. So, to begin with, we had signed up for public comment. Craig Pentegras. Craig here. Scott Pentegras. Martha Pentegras. Pentegras family may have went to the wrong courthouse. All right. And we also have a DeeDee Harris that wants to address the board on community health needs assessments. And I know DeeDee's here. So, please come up, DeeDee, and tell us what you're interested in, and we're all ears.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Is that good? My name is DeeDee Harris, and I'm the executive director of Walton Wellness. We are a nonprofit that has been here in Walton County since 2011. We were created from the Walton County Healthcare Foundation, which is a fund that was created after the sale of the county-owned hospital. And part of their job is to grant funds into the community in the name of health and healthcare. So, Walton Wellness has been around for a while, and when we first started back in 2010, we did what we called a community report card, health report card, which is basically, we went through the data of Walton County and looked at the state of our health. And so, 10 years later, it was time to do another one. So, that is what you have in front of you. It is this booklet that says, Walton County Community Health Needs Assessment. I do want to say that this document in full is available on our website, which is waltonwellness.org. So, anyone who is interested in looking at it, you can go to our website, and it's right on the front page. Also, we do have all of our raw data that we went through to create this document. This is just the tip of the iceberg of all of the data that we actually combed through to look at the state of our health in our community. And all of that raw data is also available through our website as well, and it could be very valuable to a lot of different organizations, especially those organizations that might be seeking grant funding or something like that. So, please feel free to go to our website and look through that. I don't have time to do a full presentation on this tonight. I wasn't going to take up all of your time for that. You have a lot of other important business. But I do want to just briefly go through a couple of highlights to point to you in our report. Obviously, you can read through all of the pages yourself. Great nighttime reading. I think I'm messing with the computer here accidentally. If you would, I want to point out on our diabetes chart, and we do have page numbering. It looks like page 15 is talking about diabetes in our community. And if you'll notice, most of this book is put into graph form. We wanted to make it very user-friendly, very easy to read through without having to read a bunch of text for you to gather the information. But what I want to point out is the prevalence of diabetes in Walton County is not extraordinary. It's about average with the state. However, our ER visits and our hospital admissions for diabetics is way above the state. So, that could point to a lot of different reasons in our community for our diabetics to maybe not be as healthy as the average diabetic in the state. Some of that has to do with our availability of primary care physicians, and we'll talk about that in a couple of pages. But also, it can have to do with health education as well. Just a lot of our patients are not getting the health education that they need to be able to take care of their diabetes. Next page I want to point out is on, I'm sorry, my page numbers are not as, it's page 17. It's under the title of Mental and Behavioral Disorders. I do want to point out that unfortunately, a couple of years ago, Walton Wellness started looking at this very closely, that our suicide rate in Walton County is very high. We're among the highest counties in the state of Georgia for our suicide rate. And we started looking into that because there's not a lot of things being, there's not a lot of organizations addressing suicide in our community. And the reason that is, is we have a huge gap in resources when it comes to mental health and mental health disorders. Mental health is a huge problem across the country. Just about every community could probably echo. However, Walton County, with our suicide rate combined with the lack of services, is definitely something that I think, as a community, we need to pay attention to. If you look on that page, you'll see that there's a ratio of mental health providers per resident, and that is 1,310 residents for every one mental health provider in the community, which is a lot more than the state average, whereas the state average, there's 690 citizens per every mental health provider across the state. So, we are very much lacking in mental health services. And at this current, where we currently are, our law enforcement and our jail is bearing the brunt of our mental health issues in Walton County. As a matter of fact, the jail is our largest mental health provider, and that is definitely not the place that we want to be in because the people who are needing the services obviously aren't getting served the way they should be, as well as law enforcement having, not having the skills to deal with mental health as well. The next one that I want to point out is on page 21. It's under healthcare access. And I just wanted to point out that we are severely lacking in primary care physicians, especially in the area of low-income residents. So, if you look, there is a statistic there that for every one Walton County resident, I mean, for every one primary care physician in Walton County, there is 3,900 residents. So, that's a even bigger gap than in our mental health services. There's a chart at the bottom of that page, which is called Health Professional Shortage Areas, and this is a ranking that's used nationally, and it is from zero to 26. Zero, obviously, you don't have a problem. 26, you have the worst problem. So, if you can see in that chart, Walton County falls for primary care at number 17. Dental health is at 10, and mental health is at 14. So, these are other areas that I think that we really need to spotlight and maybe do some strategies to bring up these areas in our community. The next one that I want to point out is on page 30. I just wanted to show you, we do have a COVID-designated page in here. Obviously, we couldn't let 2021 pass, and being a health organization, and not say something about COVID in our community. So, we just printed out, this is our chart, and unfortunately, it does list out our deaths as well, and that is of August of this year. So, this is just a snapshot, obviously, from where COVID started until August of this year. The last page that I just want to point to you is on the summary, which is just the next page, page 31. And I just wanted to point out this graph that's on the bottom because it's, to me, where the hope is and where good news is, which basically, this graph at the bottom talks about what makes us healthy. And 70% of what makes someone healthy in the United States is socio-economic related and behavioral-related. Those are both things that a lot of individuals have control. As well as a community as a whole, we have the ability to come together and foster an environment where we are empowering people to take control of their health so that they can have better health. I'm going to leave it there. I didn't want to take up too much more time. However, I would like to contact each and every one of you to set up a meeting so that I could talk a little bit further, more in-depth about this information, and also talk to you about some ideas that our organization has that we feel like would be great to implement in our community. Were there any questions about this? No? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, DeeDee. I believe we had called on the Pentegras for public comment, and y'all came in a little late, so I will back up. And since y'all signed up for public comment, and please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and try to keep it three minutes, please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Just him or all of us?
Uh, you know, he does pretty good for himself, but, uh...
We signed up for three, but I'll try to just keep it to me. And if they, if the spirit moves, my cousin and my wife and my brother will do it. So, gentlemen, I'm Craig Pentegras, and sitting over there on the second row are my cousin Martha, my brother Scott, my wife Terry. And we are here to talk to you about one of the items on the agenda with, is going to be where the city of Monroe has asked you all to agree to amend the service delivery agreement you've had with them since 1999, where our property is to get sewer service from the city. We are just outside in the county. And if you all were to amend that, it would cause big problems for us and other folks situated like us, whose property is in the county, but within the specific service delivery area for this sewer. Our land has been in the family since 1957, when our grandfather, J.B. Pentegras, bought it. It's now owned by Family LLC, Pentegras Walton LLC, and the members consist of 18 cousins. Our parents have passed, with the exception of Martha's father, who's 102 years old. And our family's had some development history where we're from DeKalb County, but, and granddad bought this. And we're working with a developer on a conservation subdivision on some of the old Pentegras farmland out in DeKalb. It's called Pentegras Farm. And we'd like to be able to have this property be, you know, developed in a, in a good way. And of course, if you got sewer, then it's a good thing. Well, we have the trunk sewer that runs through our property. The city approached our parents back in 87 and said, could we run a sewer line through here? And they said, yeah, that'll be good for our property. Granted them an easement for it, didn't give them fee simple title to it. And we've got the Grubby Creek Interceptor Line that runs right through the middle of our, of our property. Under the Georgia Service Delivery Act, county and city are supposed to work together, and since 1999, the agreement, it's a binding legal agreement between the city and the county, says, city is going to provide sewer service to this discrete area. And the property's out on Good Hope Road, just a half mile outside city limits, on the south side of the road, just southeast of where Unisa Drive comes in. And it's, it's good property, but it needs sewer. In fact, under y'all's UDO, we have to connect to sewer. Your UDO says, if you got sewer there, you gotta use it. And so, if you all were to agree to the city's request to suddenly wave a wand and say, all you properties out there east of town that are within this sewer service area no longer can get sewer, then it's a real conundrum. You're going to have to figure out, do you amend your code to say, well, you don't have to be on sewer after all? And it's been a real catch-22. We can't apply for rezoning unless we have a sewer service letter from the city, and the, and the city won't give it to us because, after having amended the agreement just back in February 20, which continued providing us and our folks like us service in that side of town, the city turned around in just March of this year and decided, we don't want to provide service to anybody new outside city limits. And that's even though they've got over a million and a half gallons of excess sewage treatment capacity at the Jack's Treatment Wastewater Treatment Plant. Gotten the figures from EPD, compared what the flow rate is to the permitted capacity, they've just decided they want, for some reason, hold all of that million and a half for possible future development in the city and kind of put the, I'm afraid, put the screws to folks like us. And that hurts our property value. So, we did deliver a letter to, yesterday, from, from law firm we've retained to say, hey, if you all were to agree to this request from the city, that can create some, you know, legal issues. We'd rather that not happen. We just want sewer. We're willing to pay the tap fee that the city charges for sewer, willing to pay the service fees for all the use, just want to be treated like everybody else. But there, and you all by no means have to agree to what the cities ask you to do. Right now, they're bound to provide the service to your constituents, your residents like us. We're not the only ones in this situation. But if you agree to this, then we're out of luck. Your tax base values get reduced, frankly, because if we are able to get this sewer, we can develop this in a good way and add to tax base. So, that's, that's our request to you, is if you, it's the prudent thing to do. We think it's the right thing to do, not to agree to what the city's asking you to do here. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Pentegras?
Is this, I don't know where this property's at. Does it touch the city now?
It does not.
It does not touch?
Our previous chairman's property joins Mr. Pentegras' property, and he touches the city limits. The annexation question was...
So, that, that property is in the same situation as ours is. It has the sewer line running through it. They granted an easement to the, to the city, didn't ask for any money for, because they were going to get sewer service, and this wouldn't be doing them right either.
Okay. Mr. Pentegras, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And when this issue comes up, counsel, you want to address? Well, let's get our meeting open, and so it's official on that. And to begin with, today is 80 years that the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. So, when we stand up to do the pledge, I'm going to try to do 30 seconds of silence before I start to pledge allegiance in honor of, my father was in the Pacific, so he wasn't at Pearl Harbor, thank God, but anyway. I pledge allegiance to the ten flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you so much for this day, and thank you for those brave men that fought for us so that we could have freedom. Please watch over them and their families on this day. Please be with us as we make decisions for the county tonight, and help us to make the best decisions for the whole county. Please guide us and watch us as we leave and go home tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I call the meeting to order, and roll call. Let it be noted that everybody's present. And now, I need to, y'all review the agenda, and are there any recommended additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Make a motion and be approved.
Have a motion and a second. Banks and Shellnut. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. And we have one proclamation, school choice week of January 23rd through January 29th, 2022. And in order to do the proclamation, is there one to be read, or just make that statement? Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll get right in. Oh, we do? All right. Entertain a motion to make that week, school choice week. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right. To the planning commission recommendations.
Okay, the first case is approval of ZCU 21080025, rezone from A2 and B2 to B2 with conditional use for outside storage, and reduce the transitional buffer from 50 foot to 25 foot. The applicant and owner is A Model Self-Storage LLC and Mark and Jenny Watson. There's property located at 4876, 4866, and 48, 46 Highway 81, and then 4751, and 47, 41 Shannon Road. And then parcels are 160, 28, 30, 30A, 30B, 30C, and 30D, and this is in District 1. Basically, when, when, this is where the mini warehouses are currently at. And on number two, condition number two that we proposed, the opaque fence, they've got evergreen. So, it's providing coverage, you know, as being opaque, but it is evergreen. There was no opposition at the planning commission, and this was done in pieces. I, I gave everybody a colored map, and I had to do this for myself so that I could figure out exactly how the pieces were done over the years. And so, I believe that if there is no opposition, and if the board decides to approve this, that these conditions that we've laid out on the staff report, not what's on the agenda, but on the staff report, would bring everything into compliance. They got a conditional use for the guest house to the caretaker house, overseer of the development, outside storage, and then, you know, just making sure that everything is B2, as it should be, and the conditional use. So, if there's no opposition and the board decides...
So, what you're recommending is to accept the staff?
Staff comments.
Comments, instead of the planning commission's condition?
Because on the staff comment, there, those comments are on there.
Right.
And the planning commission member read the wrong comments.
Okay.
And, and we've talked to him, and he did mean to put the comments as we had them on our staff report.
Okay.
And, and this will make sure that for the future, everything there is uniform.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to open a public hearing on this issue, and would the applicant please come forward and tell us his name and where he lives, and a little bit about this project, please?
What a way to start off tonight. Mark Watson, 48, 49, 26, Highway 81. It's where I stay. So, we here to help y'all rezone this.
Okay. Question?
Aye.
Are you in agreement with what Sharnard just recommended?
Yes. This is, this is continuation of what me and Mike and...
I understand. I'm just doing it for the record.
We fully agree.
Okay.
Everybody is on the same page.
All right. And does any of the board members have a question of Mr. Watson? Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this that would like to make a comment? Okay. Is there anyone here in opposition to this rezoning that would like to come forward and make a comment? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing on this issue and ask the board for a vote, a motion, and then the vote.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a continuation of an expansion of Mr. Watson's facility that, that's been in the works for a number of years. This is just adding on some other phases. I would like to make the motion that we approve. And just for clarification, I want to go through those conditions as recommended by staff and correct the oversight that was made in the, in the planning and zoning discussion. The, I recommend, I recommend approval with the following conditions. Number one, outside storage be allowed for recreational vehicles and watercraft only. Two, property must be fenced along Highway 81, that an opaque fence or evergreen foliage be installed down the perimeter of the property so it will be screened from the subdivision. Number three, comply with Article 6, outside storage guidelines of the Walton County Land Development Plan. Four, entrance will be on Highway 81 only. No entrance would be allowed into Watson Mill subdivision. And five, all vehicles stored must be in workable condition.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
I do have one question. The entrance, the same one that you got now, no more entrance in the same one. I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you. Payback would be good one of these days.
Thank you for your help, Mr. Watson. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Okay, the next case is approval of Z21080016, rezone 14.37 acres from A1 and A2 to A to grow and sell fruits, vegetables, and sell farm animals and poultry products with customer contact. The applicant and owner is Michael C. Lyons. The property is located at 2441 Broach Road. The property is in District 5. There was no opposition, and the planning commission recommended approval as requested.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll open public hearing on 5.2. Is the applicant here? And would like to come forward and tell us what you, what you want to do?
My name is Michael Lyons. I live at 2441 Broach Road. What we'd like to do is, we'd like to raise and sell meat goats, fruits, vegetables, annuals, perennials, things of that sort. There...
Is there anyone else here in favor of this rezone, would like to make a comment? If not, I'll ask the question, is there anyone here in opposition to this rezone? If there are not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Chairman, I make the motion we approve this weekend.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Adams to approve.
Second.
Got two seconds. Bradford, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Okay, the next case is approval of Z21090015, rezone 4.22 acres from R1 to A1 to have personal animals. The applicant is Christine Rojas. The owner is Alejandro Carrillo and Christine Rojas. The property... The property is located at forty-three-fifty Tiffany Lane, and the other two parcels are forty-three-thirty and forty-three-ten Shallow Road. This is in District One. So the planning commission recommended approval with, um, the parcels here on Shallow to limit the livestock to those parcels, and that all the guidelines for livestock be followed. There was no opposition.
Okay.
With that case.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing on this. Is the applicant here? And would like to come forward and, uh, tell us what they wanting to do, for the record, Okay, I don't see the applicant here. Um, is there anyone here in opposition to this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this one and entertain a motion from the board.
Chairman, I motion that we approve, uh, with the staff conditions as listed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Warren to approve, need a second.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Banks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous.
Okay, the next case is approval of Z two-one-zero-nine-zero-zero-one-eight, rezone two-point-four acre, two-point-four-oh acres from R-one to B-three, and reduce the fifty-foot transitional buffer from fifty to twenty-five with the addition of an eight-foot opaque fence for a plumbing office and outside storage. The applicant and owner is Kevin Barrett. The property is located at sixty-six-seventy Highway twenty. This is in District Two. There was no opposition. The applicant is planning to convert the existing house into an office, and the planning commission recommended approval with the variance to reduce the buffer with the addition of the eight-foot opaque fence.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this one, and is the applicant here would like to come forward and tell us what they wanting to do, please? Just for the record. We have to go through the motion, even though they tell us there's no opposition, you never know when someone might show up.
So I bought the property, I'm just trying to put in an office with, I have all my trucks and the plumbing business there.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the board in regards to this? All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone else here like to speak in favor of this? All right, is anyone here in opposition to this rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board to make a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I move that, uh, rezone be approved with the conditions that, from the planning zoning board be added to.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Banks.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warren. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Generally, zoning doesn't go this easy, people. I just want to tell y'all that.
This is true.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, the next case is Z two-one-zero-nine-zero-zero-one-nine. This is a rezone seven-point-five-seven acres from A-one to R-one to create four buildable lots. The applicant is Kevin Beckman. The owner is Essie Mae Johnson. Property is located at twenty-seventy-three Laurel Gate Lane and on HD Atha Road. This is in District Four. Um, this time, see, you, you spoke too soon. There was some opposition to this one. Um, the people were concerned, um, that this is not consistent with the character of the area, that all of the lots are two acres or more, um, on Laurel Gate Lane. You can see the map here. The planning commission recommended approval, um, with the conditions that the house, minimum house size is twenty-seven-hundred square foot, and that the lots be divided as per the site plan submitted.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on this one, and with the applicant, if they're here, please come forward and tell us what you want to do.
Kevin Beckman, um, so yeah, just want to take the zoning there and go from R, I guess A-one to R-one. I think the lots will be one-point-two-five acres for each one, and then, like I said, they gave us a condition of twenty-seven-hundred square feet to build, so just want to take it from where you could get two houses to four houses.
Okay. Any questions from the board? From Mr., how do you pronounce your name? Boakman?
It's Beckman.
Beckman, okay.
Yeah, the O is silent, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Uh, is anyone else here want to speak in favor of this rezone? Is there anyone here wants to speak in opposition to this rezone? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Jason Looby. Um, my wife and I own and reside on Laurel Gate Lane two-one-one-three, and I was one of the handful of residents along this street who went to the planning commission meeting and raised objections. Um, as you can see on the, the map and on the display, the density along this street, I think there's nineteen total parcels. The smallest parcel's two acres, the largest parcel's nineteen acres, averages north of five acres per, per parcel. What's being proposed is to rezone the entrance to this street. All of the residents of this street would have to drive by these small parcels in comparison to the rest of the parcels on the street. It's inconsistent with the layout as the street was developed originally. I'm certainly not against, and I don't believe any of my fellow objectors from the previous meeting are against any development down there. We just think that, we ask that the board reject the proposal for rezoning, and ask that any development in that area be conditioned upon the current zoning, which is A-one, inconsistent with the rest of the parcels along there. Um, there's not a single parcel on that street that's one-point-two-five acres, um, and we don't want to change that. The folks that live on that street bought large estate-sized parcels, majority of these houses are estate-sized houses. We're not objecting to two estate-sized parcels down there at the entrance to the street, but to put four parcels down there at an acre and a quarter a piece just doesn't, th- those would not be the same character as the rest of the parcels along the street. I was expecting some of my neighbors to be here as well, and I don't know if they ended up at the wrong courthouse, or if in lieu of their presence this evening, they reached out to our commissioner. Some of them had expressed that they were going to reach out, uh, personally via phone or email to our commissioner and, and express their objection, and I hope that they did so that I'm not the lone, uh, person standing up here objecting. But I, I spent some time researching this, and, and I, to be quite honest with you, I looked at the long-term strategy document, planning document, that the counties got posted on the website, and some of the comments that are listed in there that, uh, development doesn't take into consideration the, the desires of the residents. And here we had a handful of residents of all the cases that were presented at the planning commission meeting, and this was the only one that had objections. And I think that for the board to move forward over the objections of the very residents you represent, who want to maintain the character of the street that they live on, would just be a misrepresentation, so I thank you for your time this evening.
Hang on just a minute, I have one question, but, uh, what size are the homes on these acreage lots within your subdivision?
A majority of them are twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand-square-foot homes.
Okay.
There are a couple of the older homes that are, you know, older construction that, that don't meet those, uh, that don't meet those size requirements, but the two newest, uh, construction projects there, there was a ten-acre parcel for sale a couple of years ago. I know, because I had a relative interested in it, but it, it got purchased and split into two five-acre parcels, and two relatively large estate-sized homes were built on those two five-acre parcels, so.
How, how old is the subdivision? When was it established? Do we know? It's been there for some time, it looks like. So if they were covenants, they've expired. Were there any protective covenants when you bought your lot?
No, sir, and, and, uh, I hesitate to call it a community, but this ad hoc group of residents that live along this street in this, what used to be a very rural, um, characteristic area and is becoming more residential, you know, there, there is no organization, no homeowners association, no covenants to, to protect it. We rely on you to safeguard the, the character of, of this street, and, you know, an adjacent street is, I, I will admit that an adjacent street or, or a parallel street to it, all the zoning over there is R-one, and there's a very large parcel across HD Atha, which is probably going to be developed in the near future. But in, in conversations that other residents had with the applicant, who isn't a Walton County resident, the, the, uh, he, he said he couldn't make the money work if he could only build two houses on that parcel, and my argument is, that's not, that's not my concern, that, that it's a false premise to assume that this speculator is the only person interested in this piece of property. This piece of property was only on the market for a couple of days before it was under contract. And I don't have any objection to that seven-acre parcel being split into smaller parcels, but me and fellow residents along the street, we don't want four houses, um, in that density down there at the entrance. I mean, we, we have to drive by that every single day.
All right, we understand that. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition that would like to come forward and speak? Thank you, and now, now, okay.
Shaun is A-one, is that two acres?
Yes, two acres, and the house size is fourteen-hundred.
Okay, uh, I give the applicant a chance to come back and address the opposition if you want to. I think that's the proper way to do this. Wait till you get to the podium, please.
You know, I've been down the, I've been down the street also. I mean, there's some older homes there. I mean, I'd go and look at every home and look at the square footage size, but I mean, but if you look at the subdivision right behind it, I mean, again, that's his own, the A, R-one, I mean, he's got, you know, across the street, I'm sure they're gone for R-one, so it's not like it's anything new in that area. I mean, just because, and again, there is no protective covenants, so I mean, sometimes, you know, i- in the mathematics of it, I mean, that's what we, we're builders, we got to make money when we're doing it. I mean, there, you know, two lots versus four lots and all that, I mean, I'm trying to, again, uh, one-point-two-five acres, which is not, we're putting, I mean, I think A-one is even, could be sometimes smaller than that, an acre, so I mean, we're getting another quarter acre, but, um, you know, it just happens to be at the front of that subdivision, but they're all around there is, is, is R-one, so, I mean, that's all I would say, in, in, in that neighborhood. I mean, again, you can go ride around it, there's some small, small houses on there. I didn't go and count how many, you know, and go look at everybody's square footage, so, I mean, it would-
How many homes are you proposing to put on the seven acres?
Well, there'd be four on mine, and then there's an existing home that would stay with two point, I think it'd be two-point-five-seven would be the existing home that's included with this plat, so she, um, oh-
And then you want to put four more?
Yeah, yeah.
Four more?
Be four more, four more, yeah.
So the total tract is six-
Seven point, seven-point-five-seven acres, yeah.
Just to make that clear.
That's right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, I'll-
Is it okay if I ask that?
Yes, you ask all the questions you want right now.
There, uh, so, you get my Kevin?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Kevin, okay. Have you had an opportunity to meet with the community out there and sort of try to figure out what would fit, or what would work, or what would be agreeable on this? Because at, at some point, like it's, I agree with what the gentleman had to say, that, hey, you know, you, they, they have a fair thing, and so do you when it comes to that, but is there any intermediary, like maybe, uh, like an acre and a half lot that we could look at, and, you know, maybe put three homes instead of the four, and sort of meet in the middle?
I mean, if you want to help negotiate with the owner, the price, um, I mean, that's what I mean, I-
No, I'm not there with that. I'm asking, are, are you negotiable? Could you make that work as your development plan?
Well, um, I mean, to get through, I mean, I'd have to go back and work the deal, rework the deal, I think, um, you know, to, to make it work for me, uh, I mean, I guess what it would have been, yeah, I mean, I, I think with the mathematics of it, I'd have to go back and rework the deal to see if I could get it. Now, I had a conversation with the gentleman when I was, I was just there looking, doing some due diligence, and, um, you know, had a conversation with him, so I knew right off the, you know, the challenge that, you know, again, they're protective of their, their street and the acreage and stuff like that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if, I mean, I guess we could see if there's some, you know, but there'd be the owner that has the piece of property, all the neighborhood, I mean, you know, and, I mean, that's, I don't know if we could all come to, to an agreement, but there's-
I mean, would you be okay, or is time of the essence? Would you be okay if I gave it a little bit more time and maybe allow you and the community to come to consensus on this, and, you know, if maybe an acre and a half, like meeting in the middle, like maybe in A-two? I'm not trying to tell you to do that.
Yeah, I mean-
I'm just asking, without having to re-admit, without really, like, anything further to maybe give it, you know, until the January meeting, to allow y'all to come together and sort of look at it, and just see the schematics, come sort of put you on the spot right now.
Yeah.
So would you be okay with that?
You know, I made this walk, I mean, there's, it's, we've been holding on this for quite a while, I guess, I mean, you know, because I think I missed one of the meetings or the deadline for something, so I, you know, um, I mean, I, I guess, uh, you know, that's a tou- that's a tough one, I mean, you know, I may look at just some other things that I can do around there, I mean, I've got some other things in the works, but it, you know, I mean, I'd have to have a, I mean, I guess it, we, we could do that, but that's not my preference, but.
Well, we have a recommendation from the planning commission. I need to close the public hearing, and then we can discuss, and if you have some questions, uh, do that, but let me, let me close the public hearing on this. We understand the opposition, we understand what he wants to do. Now, open it up to the board for discussion.
But you know, he could, right now, the way it's owned, going there and re- put, without rezoning it, he could go build three houses right now, and they could be fourteen-hundred square feet.
Essentially not, because he's tied in with the two-acre lot with the existing home, so he'd have to cut that lot, which is why he can't do that, is my understanding. Is that correct? Because the total tract-
Sixteen-hundred square feet in agriculture.
Isn't that correct?
Now-
Yes, he said the seven-point-five-seven is taken out the two-acre tract.
That's right.
That leaves five, so really he can only do two.
Right, he can only do two.
But he could be-
Oh, it's fourteen-hundred in agriculture.
Yeah.
And that's, doesn't fall on our subdivision.
I'd like to, okay.
Any other discussions, uh, points made from the board? So, let me get this right. He can, the way it's owned right now, cut off two lots under agriculture and build a fourteen-hundred-square-foot home.
Would not rezone it.
Without rezoning it. To do what he's wanting to do, he's wanting to yield four lots, one and a quarter, and agreeing to twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot home, and that still fall on our guidelines, no vinyl siding, the overhang, and everything else that we're trying to improve the exterior, uh, appearance of new homes being built. All right, it's up to y'all to do, make a motion, what you want to do with this. I'm just trying to get a full understanding for the record.
Are you okay with, I'd like to make a motion, starting out to table it till next month, to allow the homeowners and the developer to be able to come to consensus.
All right, the motion is to table this till next month, and allow the homeowners and the applicant to try to, uh, come to a little better agreement on what's going to be done up there. Uh, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
Who second it? Adams. All right, we have a motion and a second to table this for one month, in the hopes that the applicant and homeowner can come to some sort of, uh, agreement. All right, I'll call the vote. Those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on that. I, I voted to table it, but I don't really- I, I voted to table it, but I don't want to start tabling. We're here, we're not mediators. We're here to make decisions. And we need to have all this worked out before the property.
I'm, I'm in agreement, and that's the purpose of our planning commission, is for those in opposition to come, and this type development's only going to be getting more, more and more, because of the cost of lots and the need for the houses in the community. So, but this one stands tabled, we're going to 5.6. I did have to make my comment one too soon, didn't I?
That's passed unanimously.
It passed unanimous, I heard no one vote against. And I did not vote.
Okay, the next case is approval of Z21090027, rezon 3.87 acres from A1 to R1 to create three buildable lots. The applicant and owner is Jamie Wade Griffith. The property is located at 4025 Bullock Bridge Road. This is in District 1. There was no opposition at the planning commission, and the recommendation was for approval with no conditions.
Okay. Is the applicant here for this one? Please come forward, sir.
Yes, I'm Wade Griffith. I'd like to rezone that to R1, it's 3.87 acres. Everything around it is R1, and across the street is R1.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here in favor of this, like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here in opposition to this, would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that the board approve as adopted by the planning commission.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Shellnut. Call the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Last one.
Okay, approval of Z2110002, rezon 2.76 acres from A1 to R1 to split off one acre with an existing house and create a 1.76 acre buildable lot. The owner and applicant is Joshua Parker. The property is located at 2031 John Stowe Road, and this is in District 6. There was no opposition at the planning commission, and the planning commission recommended approval.
Okay. I'll open public hearing on this. Is the applicant here, would like to come forward and tell us right quick what you want to do?
Yeah, my name's Josh Parker, and I'm hoping to put a, a 10-story building there. I'm kidding. When I initially bought this property, it was, I was told it was right at a two acre tract. It was an older deed, and the attorney here in town recommended I get a survey on it. Upon getting it surveyed, I found that it was almost three acres, and light bulb went off, and I said, man, it'd be a great spot for me to build a house. And so, there's, there's a house that's currently on, on the, on the property, planning on obviously surveying, you know, a separate lot for that, and the remainder, you know, left over to, to build a single-family residence.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here in opposition to this request? All right, I close public hearing on this, and ask for a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm making motion to approve this, uh, planning, zoning commission's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve it as presented. You know, the second from Commissioner Adams. Call the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a statement. I'm, I have growing concerns, and I'm, I'm hearing more and more from constituents about the growth, both residential and, and commercial, that we're seeing in Walton County. And I know we've got, we're limited to what we can do, but I hope we continue to have some conversations about being sure that that growth is handled smartly, if you will, in the county. So, I know our, what our land use plan is up for review or discussion, but I would just encourage you and, and fellow colleagues, let's, let's think about that, because we're, we're certainly booming, which is good to see, but we, we've, we've got to do it responsibly if we want to distance ourselves from Gwinnett and DeKalb counties, for example.
Well, as you're aware, since I've been in office, we've updated our building codes. We've updated our subdivision regulations. We've brought a higher goal for the builders to jump at, in an effort to make sure that what's built is, doesn't reduce the value of what's already existing here. They are tract builders looking at Walton County, they are builders looking to build total rental subdivisions, which we're trying to address as, as we speak. And Walton County is not alone in this. Every county in the state that's within driving distance of Atlanta, or Athens, or Gainesville, or Augusta, are all experiencing the same growth. So, we'll move on with this agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Warren. The administrative consent agenda, y'all have had a chance to review the different items on it. It's, and there's seven items on it, two sets of minutes, the typical surplus property, ratification of actions taken by WCWSA, there's a termination of a water agreement with Floyd and Falco Park that, if you want me to bring that out for discussion, Kirkland?
If you don't mind.
We, we'll do that. And I got one phone call on it. Everybody else, we will take out 6.7 and discuss it separately, but I entertain a motion to approve the rest of the administrative consent agenda.
Make a motion, the administrative consent agenda be approved.
Okay.
Except for 6.7.
All right. You got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Kirkland wanted us to take this agreement out and discuss it separately, and we started trying to compile numbers today, Kirkland, to see what we were paying for water prior to this agreement. It is fairly difficult, because to begin with, they were running the water and power bills all on one bill down at Falco. And we found out today, late in the day, that there is a separate City of Monroe meter for the irrigation down there. But I haven't had time. What we'd like to do is terminate this existing agreement, because it's with Mr. Floyd himself, and get the documentation that we can get, and we can always renegotiate an agreement with the family or the estate. But we have two deceased purchase agreement owners that we need to, we need to terminate this one, in my opinion. And we can always renegotiate with the estate.
And we, we passed that along to the family as well, that this is, we, you know, that the, that the, we were going to bring this up, the termination, based on, and the contract, the current contract allows the county to terminate at the end of any term. This, this started in 2013, I believe, and it's, it became renewable annually, so it's automatically renewed for the last several years. But it does have a provision, the original contract had a provision to, for the county to terminate at any, at, at the end of any term. And when we said it was going to be brought up, we conveyed through the family's counsel or, or through counsel that they had consulted with, that we were not foreclosing the possibility of, of continuing to discuss it. Right now, your contract is an annual rate, no matter what you use, so for instance, future discussions could, could involve metering and pay up for.
And for the public, this is a contract on a well, a high-production well, that Falco Park was using for irrigation when it was needed, and it was negotiated years ago, 2013. So.
Yeah, as a, I was the, probably the lead person in this original negotiation, so I would just like to express the condolences to the family, and what a great asset to our community, Mr. Floyd and his wife. We're all really saddened to hear his passing. And, I mean, I think we should keep the option to renegotiate with the family if it seems to be a good option for the county.
I agree.
Okay, but we, we have that intention, but we need to terminate this existing agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this pays, so he's do one more payment, it pays in arrears, right? So there's one more payment.
The contract pays in arrears, so there'll be one last payment made in January.
On January 1st?
Or the ability to use for this last quarter.
Okay. And the $1,000 early termination fee does not apply, because it's in the term?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the termination, provided that we would revisit it, possibly for renegotiation at some point in time.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, Mr. Melton, Finance.
Good, good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Uh, the first item is the, excuse my voice, I'm recovering from a sinus infection here. The first item is the, believe it or not, the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar, you should have in front of you. It's very similar to past years, just updated based on the calendar. There's one, I believe the packets go out a week earlier this year to give the department heads up, additional time to get their documents together and back to finance and HR.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 23 budget calendar.
Some of.
You got a motion? I need, we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. We have resolutions, fiscal year 22 budget amendment.
Yes, sir, there's four budget amendments. The first two are from the Water Department. The first one, it relates to revenue after the rate increase recently and the connection fee increase. It shows the effect on, or projected effect on fund balance, and.
That's within the Water and Civil Department?
Yes, sir. The second one is also the Water Department. They're having to sandblast and paint a water tower. They've got a R&amp;M agreement that covers that, but the EPA is making them encase or contain the sandblasting, and that's what that Second Amendment is for. It would decrease the fund balance by that amount, as shown. Yeah.
All right, we'll take those and adopt those, and then.
There's two more.
There's, there's two.
On the, on, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the water, if I can ask a question. So that, that total increase in revenue that we're looking at, is that per year?
It's for the remaining of this year.
That's the remaining of our budget year through June.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty. That department has millions of dollars of infrastructure upgrades that need to be done, and, all right, entertain a motion that we approve those.
There's, there's, there's two more.
Oh, there's two more? I'm sorry, I thought you wanted those two done. All right, tell us about the other two.
Okay, there's two more, and they're, they're related also. There's, there was funds approved in the FY22 budget for renovation of two offices. The first one was a public defender's office, and then the District Attorney. They're not going to use those funds, and these budget amendments would move the money into the general government building budget unit for miscellaneous minor projects that are coming up, one of which I think is in IT. So that's what these last two would do, would move the approved but unused funds from those two departments to general government buildings. Do you have any questions?
Entertain a motion to approve them now.
Some move.
Have a motion to approve.
Quick question. Well, go ahead, get a second.
Yes.
The health clinic, where is that?
That's coming up.
Oh, it's next, that's a different one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, the, there's two project length budgets, the first one.
Wait a minute, we haven't voted yet.
Okay, sorry.
We got a motion to approve, did I get a second?
Second.
Got a second? Commissioner Warren? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, Melton.
Okay. The first project length budget is for the historic courthouse renovations, Mrs. Sploss III project length budget. You should have copies of the resolution.
We do.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions about that? We have some window sashes that are rotten in this beautiful building. We have some major cosmetic work to do on it to keep it in pristine shape. I'm scared some of the panes are going to fall out while we're sitting here, though some of them that have gotten in that bad a shape. So, entertain a motion to approve this.
Some move.
You got a motion to approve, any second?
Save it.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimous. Okay, now the employee health clinic.
Yes, sir. This is also Sploss III project length budget to move toward the health clinic project. And I'll say this, we're winding down Sploss III. There's 300 to 400,000 dollars left in Sploss III that is non-public, public sa, yes, unallocated public safety.
Okay.
I should say, non-public safety complex money.
Just, just an update, we are waiting on the City of Monroe to do a rezon for the VFW before we can close with the VFW on the building that we're going to renovate into the employee.
But that rezon affects the property that the VFW is.
Is purchasing, not our property. And, so, it's coming, but it takes time sometimes to get to a closing table, so. Entertain a motion on the employee health clinic budget. Amendment?
I make a motion to approve.
You got a motion from Commissioner Shellnut?
Second.
You got a second from Commissioner Banks? Any further comment or discussions? Call the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, passes unanimous.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, thank you. We have a resolution on Johnson-Johnson settlement.
Mr. Chairman, you'll recall that the board brought an action, approved an action back in 2018, called manufacturers and distributors accountable for the opioid epidemic. There is a settlement out there, $26 billion nationwide settlement that relates to all these actions that have been brought on behalf of state and local governments against certain manufacturers and distributors of opioids. It's unclear at this point what Walton's share would be for that settlement, but you have a resolution that would essentially have the, the county opt in with the other, with the state and with local governments on how to divvy up whatever money.
This is just saying, we'll go for our fair share of whatever we get.
Exactly. The main thing, you boys, is no brainer to join in, because your other option would be to go out of the law, and this is not.
We can't afford that, you know that.
So, it is, it's a resolution that not only would opt in for, for that, but it would authorize the chairman to sign appropriate documents to send to, to the state that we're, we're all in. So, again, I can answer any questions, but it's, I know many of you that root this. maybe it's a group decision.
All right, entertain a motion to enter into this, uh, resolution on the J and J settlement.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve, uh, Dr. Adams.
Second.
Commissioner Adams, second, by Commissioner Shelnut. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, passes unanimous. And now the, uh, 8.5 is a resolution that, uh, the Pendergrass family was talking about that we adopted last month, and the reason it's back on this agenda today to re-adopt this is we failed to name on the agenda that the city of Monroe Sewer Services was within this, uh, resolution.
That's, that's right, so just, just, uh, lay it back down for you to remember from last month, so there was a, a, this, this resolution came about, uh, to, to amend the service delivery, um, due to, uh, Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs North. You, you, uh, basically, uh, the JDA in charge of service delivery, um, down in that, in that Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs North area. Um, when that resolution was presented by the JDA, um, it was noticed on the agenda, but, um, at the, towards the end, the city of Monroe asked that, um, that that gen, that that, excuse me, that resolution also referenced the sewer service area for the city of Monroe. Um, so that wasn't on the agenda, uh, as reference in that regard, so people like the Pendergrass family wouldn't have known that they needed to come to the meeting and make their feeling at home. So we thought the appropriate way to address that would be to simply put it back on the agenda so that the public would know, um, and that the Pendergrass family would have time to come and make it known that they had an issue with it. Um, now, on the merits of that, obviously, we want to re-adopt the portion related to Stanton Springs because, uh, we're trying to keep, uh, that Stanton Springs area largely in control of the JDA as it relates to providing the services down there. Um, as it relates to the Pendergrass situation, as he explained, um, that area outside of the city has historically, in recent times, been part of the service, of the city of Monroe's sewer service area. That is an area that they requested be included in the past. Um, you know, the county doesn't get involved in asking for sewer, so, the county doesn't do sewer, so sometime in the past, the city of Monroe asked that that area be included, presumably because their sewer man ran through there, um, and so the county didn't object to, uh, that being included. Uh, this county is not historically, um, required, uh, them to provide sewer to any particular customer outside, um, outside the city of Monroe. Um, and so, when the city of Monroe asks for their territory to be limited, that's certainly not something that the county would be concerned about from the county's standpoint. If, you know, if they wanted to provide it, great, if they didn't want to provide, that, that's kind of how it was viewed for, for your, uh, from your standpoint, I think. Uh, the, uh, again, the county doesn't really get involved in who the city provides sewer service to, so we view this very much as, as a private issue between the property owners and the city of Monroe. We don't view this as a county issue. Uh, we did receive a letter from, uh, the attorney that made statements that, should we approve, should you guys approve this, that that would somehow violate, uh, their rights, uh, legally. I don't think that they would have a claim against the county, um, from a, from a legal standpoint, um, because there's, there's no, uh, private property owners aren't third-party beneficiaries, frankly, of service delivery agreements. Um, and again, even if that stays like it is, I don't think the county is going to enforce that for the benefit of private property owners. Um, but we certainly wouldn't object to the city certainly feel for where they're coming from. I would have thought that the city would have granted them the right to tap into sewer as part of their original deal to let the sewer run through, but that's, again, a private issue that I don't know the details of between the city, uh, and, and the property owners. Um, that he mentioned the land development ordinance, uh, it does say in there that the, uh, that, uh, if sewer is available, they have to tap into it. Um, that's true, uh, but only if it's available. And if the city doesn't provide it, then certainly the county would allow septic, uh, and they could, they could apply their, under the normal, uh, rules to anybody else, so we don't believe we're taking any property from anybody. Certainly, I don't think the county is part of that, that, um, that issue. Um, so what you do on, on that is, is up to you guys, but, um, but anyway, that's the kind of the backstory there as to why we're putting that agenda item back on, uh, net.
Okay, okay. Does the board have any questions?
So in the resolution, where is the sewer even mentioned in the resolution? Or it's not?
The resolution just mentions that, um, that the service delivery strategy would be amended to limit Monroe's service area to the city of Monroe as far as new, new customers go. And that's, that is added 100% at Monroe's request. So all, Monroe said, we pass something internally, city of Monroe passed a policy, I think in March, uh, that said, they're not going to do it anymore. They're, they're not going to provide sewer outside the city of Monroe anymore, and so they're just asking that the service delivery be amended to be consistent with their, their policy. And so, because the county doesn't get involved in where, where the city wants to provide, you know, any policy decisions about where they want to provide sewer, then it was presented as, as at their request. So it's, the question is whether you're honoring their request to change their sewer service. Um, either way, I don't think it's going to change whether or not Monroe chooses to provide. They'll, they'll still have the fight with Monroe about whether or not Monroe's...
Regardless of what we do.
Regardless of what we do, uh, so, so that's the, that's the lay of that land. We're, I don't think the county, Ch, Charnett's office, if, if the city, um, chooses to provide sewer, their office will, will cooperate and be great, and they'll rock along there. If they choose not to, then, then certainly we're not going to say, tell the property owners they can't develop, they can just follow our guidelines for non-sewer, so, um, if, we really just don't view it as, um, from her office's standpoint and from a legal standpoint, we don't, we just don't view it as, as our fight, uh, from, from those two standpoints. How you guys vote is up to you. But what's, what's really important, uh, you know, so whether or not you abide by Monroe's request or not, that'll be up to you, but what's important from everybody's standpoint is we need JDAs, uh, we need that change made for JDA on Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs.
So how do we need to word this motion?
Yes.
If we choose to just live with the JDA?
Uh, then you could word it by saying that to, to strike the portion of the resolution related to the city of Monroe.
So move.
But it don't matter.
What he said.
The city's got to give a sewer anyway.
Not necessarily.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
And if they're going, if they're...
They, I mean, they don't have to, but...
If they're going to tap into sewer, it's got to be through the city of Monroe.
Yeah.
You guys don't offer sewer, so...
We, we don't have a sewer service.
So how do we, um, my point, my question is, how do we approve the city of Monroe limiting the service strategy? We have no dog in that fight.
You're, you're just degrading that, you're just changing their service area, right, because, based on their request, uh, that's all you would be doing, is, is changing their su... Every 10 years, I mean, it, it, either it happens now, I guess, or 10 years from now when it's time, or eight years from now when it's time to renew, or whenever you, you know, they're going to go back and, and renegotiate service delivery, and they're going to say, just like we told you eight years ago, we don't want to provide it, or, or maybe they'll say something different then, I don't, I don't know, but either way, your agreement is not going to, uh, they'll either, uh, they'll either provide it, or they won't, um, either way, uh, and, and whether they have a lawsuit or, that'll be between them, and we just don't see where the county fits into any lawsuits or any disputes or anything else that relates to, to that property.
Well, my concern would be if we say we're going to limit their service delivery strategy, they file a lawsuit, can they use that as a means to say this is right? Because, hey, the county said it's limited?
Well, if we get too much into litigation strategy and what else, we need to go in executive session, so...
Gotcha.
Play, play our parts up here, but...
Okay.
But I, I don't, I don't feel like the county is exposed, uh, to a, you know, one or another.
So what do we do?
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve it.
We already have a motion on the table, so...
On the table for what? I wasn't sure if that was an emotion or not.
Yeah, and Adam seconded it.
Yeah, it was a motion from Kirkland.
Yeah, my motion was to approve the JDA part of it, but to stay out of the dogfight on the, uh, how you word that.
Right.
On this...
I just think for now, what you would do, and you can just, we'll pass it on to Monroe, what you've done, but basically, you approve the change to the, um, to the, uh, service delivery and, and, uh...
Stanton Springs.
But strike the portion that references the city of Monroe.
Yeah, and we see that it's not been, not our dog in the, not our fight. That's my motion.
Does that any way put the county in any liability in a lawsuit between the, uh, land owner and the city of Monroe?
Done, all you would have done is maintain the status quo, um, by doing that, so...
Maintain what is right now.
Whatever it was, the year, the last time they did an agreement, and whether it gives them any additional rights in their claim against that, that'll be, that'll be between them.
Okay.
But I understand the motion as, as a, that you're approving the, um, the resolution as it related to Stanton Springs and Stanton Springs North and simply striking a portion of the way to the city of Monroe.
Correct.
All right, Kirkland made that motion and Adam seconded it. Any other questions from the other board members? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of passing the Stanton Springs part of the service delivery amendment and deleting the Monroe part, as the motion was made, say aye.
Aye.
Of, those opposed to it? Passes unanimous. Okay, human resources. I thought we were going to get out here early, but we...
He spoke to sing.
Good evening. This is a request for a new temporary position in the I D, IT department. Um, due to the current workload in this department, um, they really need a new employ, another employee, and in an effort to reduce cost, a temporary employee is being requested.
Is that why a computer went down today?
Shannon is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, all right. Uh, IT department's asking for a temporary person in their staff and entertain a motion. I, I think we should do this.
A move that the board approve, Mr. Chairman?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Passes. All right, contracts. We have, before you, you have in your packet, uh, contract with PPI, design of the Walton County Public Safety Complex. And this is the first step, it's within industry amounts. Uh, there's a range of between 5.5 to 6.5% for the design and, uh, working plans of the Public Safety Complex, and we're asking that this board approve this contract.
Uh, we'd ask, obviously, that'd be subject to our review.
Right, it's subject to the county's attorney's full review.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
I second.
Got a second from Commissioner Banks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Uh-uh. We got Commissioner Kirkland Dixon and Lee Bradford voting against. And, uh, I'll make a statement real quick on this. We were successful in getting Walton County's bond rating increased by most, both Moody and Poor's and S and P. Uh, we have bonded funds to build the Public Safety Complex, uh, and got a rate of 1.81 fix for 30 years, and, uh, we're off and running, so I just wanted to, for the public's use, we, we should be in it in three years, we hope, so... All right, is there any other discussion the board would like to bring up and discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a statement about the PPI, getting the design for this. I'm glad to have a local company, very reputable company. Anytime you can deal with your own local people, I like to do that, and I don't think there's a better group than Precision Planning, and especially Liz, she's done a great job. Thank you.
Well, they, they were in a competitive race for it, and, uh, we, uh, I'm happy of that myself, and, uh, I believe you've been working on it fif, 14 years, Liz, if I'm not correct, with different proposals along with some others that bid on it, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a comment about PPI. My vote against this is not indicative of their services, they've done a good, great job over the years, it's just my opposition to the jail.
Okay.
Not, not their company.
All right, thank you. Any other clarifications want to be made? Okay, any announcements? Uh, I'll make one that Suzanne and I are sponsoring a luncheon for the department heads and their assistants, if they want to bring them, at the country club Friday the 17th, and inviting you commissioners to join us, so... Thank you. Uh, this should be our last meeting for the year, I'll make this announcement. We have some year-end business that we will have to take care of, most likely, uh, that we, uh, will have to meet again, uh, and we have our proposed district maps that we're going to try to combine a public comments section on the district maps, we're in the process of getting them online, and we'll get them to the paper as soon as we can, and, uh, because they need to be voted on and sent back to the state in our January meeting, so we're looking at the, either the 16th, that evening, hopefully that's what we're looking at, but just kindly, uh, keep that in the back of your mind. Is there any reason to go to executive session? All right, entertain a motion that we adjourn. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Everybody's ready to adjourn. I thought you dropped a rock.